We appear to be recording and streaming your worship.
Thank you very much. For all those joining us via video, I would ask that you turn off your video until your section of the meeting comes up with zooming it sometimes causes us to have some interruption. So we appreciate that. I will start by calling the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This public, public hearing, public meeting is being held by electronic participation pursuant to the municipality's procedural bylaw number 2020-020 as amended and section 239 3.1 of the municipal act 2001 as amended. The meeting will be live streamed on the municipality's meeting portal and YouTube channel. The video recording will be uploaded to the municipality of Trent Hills website following the meeting. We go call the meeting to order the approval of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda for the public hearing, public meeting on April 13th, 21, 2021 be received and approved. Can I get a mover and seconder please? Moved by Rick and I'm not seeing all of the people Doug.
Members of council may have to call out your worship. We have a number of individuals in so it's probably pushing the.
Rose then seconder.
I will second.
Mike second. Would you call a question please?
Hopefully approved. English?
Yes.
Councilor Callahan McLennan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Metcalf?
Yes.
Councilor Redden?
You want your video on?
I guess.
Councilor Tully?
Yes.
Councilor Bratney?
I don't know if I can.
Yes. Mayor Creighton?
Yes.
Carried by seven year worship.
Thank you. I would like to welcome everybody here to the meeting. I am joined here tonight by Deputy Mayor Mike Metcalf, councilors Rosemary Callahan McLennan, Kathy Redden, Ken Tully, Rick English and Gene Brahaney along with our clerk legislative leader Doug Irwin and some staff from Trent Hills. At this time, I would ask if there's any disclosure of particular interest.
Your worship, I'd like to declare on 4F and I filed the necessary paperwork.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'd like to declare on 4D and I submitted the paperwork.
Thanks very much, Rose. If anything comes up as we go along, just bring it to Doug's attention. Thank you. So this public meeting, these public hearings and public meetings are being held in accordance with provisions of the planning act. The purpose of the meeting is for council members to formally hear and receive public and agency comments. The intent of these statutory public hearings and public meetings is to receive public feedback and incorporate it into recommendations, into a recommendation report from staff. No decisions were made during this meeting. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded for the purposes of creation of a public record. Any property owner may file an application under the planning act relating to their property. The purpose of the public process in filing an application is to determine if the proposal is supported by local and provincial land use policies. The process also seeks public input in order to determine if any issues identified have, have been or can be addressed. The applicants or agents will be given an opportunity to speak on behalf of their submission and to respond to questions arising from the discussion of these applications. Interested members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition to the application being dealt with at this meeting or hearing. All persons addressing council must state their full name and address and must direct their comments through the chair. Any information you provide at the public hearing, public meeting may be disclosed in a public record. If you missed the live meeting, have technical issues, or prefer to submit comments following the public hearing, you may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca. That's all lowercase, planning@trenthills.ca. The municipality requires these comments no later than seven days after making, after this meeting to ensure the comments can be reviewed by planning staff prior to preparing a final recommendation report to be heard at a future council meeting. So we are now at the public hearings and the first one is seven consent application B03-2020 and B04-2020 subsequent to February the 4th, 2020 deferral zoning amendment application C03-2020 subsequent to February 20, February 4th, 2020 deferral for Richard Jeffrey, 5 Nelson Drive, Warwick, concession six, part of lot 11, former township of Percy. Liz, you're taking this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is Liz Stillman. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to note for all the public hearings and public meetings on the agenda tonight that the notice was given in accordance with the planning act. As noted, the first application we have is for Richard Jeffrey. This is a recirculation. The applications did come forward on February 4th, 2020 and were deferred at that time. The application has now been reconfigured due to the concerns that were received then. Severance application BO3-2020 proposes to create one new parcel. It's approximately 16 acres of vacant land from approximately 100 acres and it will be for residential building purposes. Severance application BO4-2020 proposes to create one new parcel. It is approximately 2.5 acres and it does contain the existing residential dwelling and an outbuilding and it's also from approximately 100 acres. And the retained portion being approximately 81.5 acres contains the existing agricultural outbuildings and will also be for residential building purposes. Mr. Jeffrey submitted the zoning amendment application in conjunction with the severance applications to ensure that we have the proper zoning in place. The current zoning of all the lands is rural environmental protection and environmentally sensitive. The zoning for severance consent BO3-2020, it will remain rural EP and ES. The proposed zoning for severance BO4-2020, it will be rural residential. It's the one with the existing residential dwelling. And the zoning for the retained portion, it's approximately 81.5 acres. It's due to the size. It's also going to remain rural EP and ES. All the environmental protection and environmentally sensitive zoning will remain in place. We did circulate for further comments in which we received from Neil Allenson and Lower Trent Conservation Authority and the comments were included in the agenda package. And the mapping just indicates how the lots were reconfigured to be in compliance with all the municipal and provincial policies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Liz. Is Mr. Jeffrey with us?
Yes, hello.
Oh, just wondering, do you have anything you wish to add to the presentation, Mr. Jeffrey?
Well, no, I just get, just that, yeah, the reduced applicant, reduced application resulted in a substantial buffer between our new lot and, and Mr. The Kellys. And I think, I think that there being, you know, more, more width there has helped. It's, it's, it's got a, it's got a greater front, front, as greater width than, as a buffer than, than his lot. So anyway, I think that answered his questions. And I talked to him a little bit over the fence one day and followed up with an offer to meet together on the site or, or just have another talk. And two weeks later, he indicated that he would not have an objection to, to, to anything there. And I met with the Snyder's onsite shortly after the meeting in June with planning staff who wanted to greater assess the relationship of the buildings and infrastructure of the barn and the house. And basically not much changed, but anyway, it's a better understanding of everything. The, that Brett, I talked to him. Lori was busy. So anyway, I guess, two weeks ago, I got an email from, from her saying she had no objection. So, you know, I think everything is good with them.
Okay. Any, any questions from council? Is there anyone joining us in this meeting which would like to make a comment?
Your worship?
Yes.
I do see Counselor English's hand is up. I would just ask because of the number of people involved that council perhaps call out so that the mayor can see or hear.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have all counsel in my, in my view. So go ahead, Counselor English.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much. Just a quick question through Liz, and I'm sure I saw this right on the mapping. So there, there will only be one additional entrance coming onto Nelson Drive. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The existing residential dwelling does have the entrance off Nelson. The other two properties are sorry, off the unassumed road allowance and the other two properties will have frontage on Nelson. So the larger retained parcel plus the proposed severed parcel to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Point, just a point of fact, there is an existing entrance to the 81 acre parcel and that will probably remain the, the only entrance to, you know, to, to the 80, 81 acres and any house that ever gets built there in the future. So we will be creating one new entrance for, for our law, for our, our 16 acre parcel.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much. We now move on to the next application. This is severance consent application B26-2020 and B27-2020 subsequent to a December 29th, 2020 deferral. It's a zoning amendment application C12-2020, which is also subject to a September 29th, 2020 deferral for Peter Locke, the 10th line east, county road 39, 38, part of lot 17 and 18 concession nine, former township of Percy. And I'll turn it over to you, Liz.
Thank you through you, Mayor. As noted, this is a recirculation as the applications were heard on February 4th, 2020. At that time, they were deferred to address some agency comments. The lots have been slight, or one of the lots has been slightly reconfigured. So we also recirculated to the agencies for further comments. Severance consent application B26 proposes to create one new parcel. It's approximately three acres of vacant land from approximately 76.88 acres. It will be for residential building purposes in which access will be a right of way which comes out onto county road 38. Severance consent application B27 proposes to create one new parcel. It's approximately 2.09 acres of vacant land and will also be for residential building purposes and will also be accessed via a right of way out onto county road 38. The retained portion is approximately 71.79 acres. It's also vacant land and will also be eligible for residential building purposes. Mr. Locke did submit the zoning amendment application in conjunction with the severance applications to ensure the correct zoning is in place. The current zoning is rural environmental protection and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for severance applications B26 and B27 will be a rural residential exception. This exception is going to acknowledge the reduced lot frontage due to the right of way access and with being in a rural residential zone. The zoning for the retained portion is going to remain rural environmental protection and environmentally sensitive in which all of the EP and the ES zoning will remain in place. As noted, we did recirculate especially to lower trend conservation because the lots had been reconfigured. Northumberland County had also provided some comments which were included in the agenda package for your review. And the mapping just shows how it was the B26 which was reconfigured into a slightly larger parcel at the request of the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Liz. Is Mr. Locke with us?
I am.
Okay. Oh, it's good to see you, Peter.
You too.
Anything further to add?
Nothing from my end.
That's great. Thank you. Counsel, anything from counsel or any questions?
I have a question, Bob.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. This most likely for, for Liz or Jim. My question is the letter from Northumberland County and they cite both the official plans for the county and for Trent Hills where lots need to be put on full season year round roads. Yet I'm aware there's a deeded right of way. Could, could, is you provide some clarification on the two lots and, and the letter from Northumberland County?
Sure, I'll tackle this one through you, your worship. So yes, the policies are in, in the official plans of the two municipalities. However, this right of way was created a number of years ago. I did check the file. I'm not sure Mr. Locke may know. I think it goes back to perhaps when that county road was constructed, right away was put in, put in on the property and the entrance was put in at that time. I'm not sure of the details, but I think there was an agreement with the county at that time. So because of that historic precedent, that's why we're bringing these forward to be considered.
Sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Did you, did you get the end of that?
I believe so. Yes, there's a historical agreement that isn't.
There's a historical precedent here for this right of way. It wouldn't normally be something we'd consider, but because of that history and because it's in place and the roads manager and I have been out there, the fire chief has been out there to make sure that the right of way will serve for emergency access. So the applicant has certainly done all the requirements, but it's not a, it's not something we want to continue to do. It's something we recognize historically. That's how I describe the policies.
Thank you. Any other councils?
Gene?
Gene, go ahead.
I'm curious about the, the large lot, the Soviet one acres. Wouldn't have access to come to concession 10 for, to get off of that?
I think Mr. Law can provide the answer.
It does, Gene. It, it, back in the day when the county resurfaced 38, historically, that lot was given to the county to use. My father Murray has pushed through an existing road, which is a single vehicle road that can continue right through to my home out to the 10th. It all joins together. The extra severance would be in the future of one of my kids possibly. We'd have to revisit where that home would have to go or, or even if they would want to build here. That is their decision and we'd have to visit that at time. But it is a, I guess, a deeded right of way and it comes out to my home from one side to the other. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone else on council? Is there anyone joining us tonight for this hearing that has any questions? Thank you. We'll move on. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. We are now at zoning amendment application. Zoning amendment application C04-2021 from Brandon Bickle, 98 county road 35 concession 10, part of lot 16, former township of Percy. I'll turn it over to Liz.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, this is zoning amendment application C04-2021. The applicant is Brandon Bickle. Property is located at 98 county road 35. The purpose of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is to recognize the area of one existing parcel, which is approximately just over five acres in size. It does contain an existing residential dwelling and outbuilding. This application proposes to rezone the subject property from rural residential to a site specific rural residential exception. And this exception will permit the change of use to an onsite farm brewery, retail establishment and a farm style market garden. And we did circulate to Northumberland County as well as Lower Trent Conservation Authority in which the comments were in the agenda package for your review. And Mr. Bickle did provide a detailed site plan of the proposed use for the property and the layout, which was also included in the agenda package. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bickle, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Would you wish to add anything or is it?
I think, Mr. Mayor, that she covered it all. Yep.
Great, thank you. Any, anyone, the councilors wish to ask any questions?
I have a question, your worship.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. My question is again relating to the Northumberland County letter and it stipulates the request for a traffic impact study report. I'm not sure that I understand the necessity for this on that roadway. Is there any thoughts or clarifications from Northumberland County as to why that would be requested?
Through you, your worship. No, it was simply the, those were the only comments we received. I know it's quite common for them to request that. I think when there's any change in a property that might be of a commercial nature, but I think the scale of this proposal would not warrant a full traffic study. I mean, that's a heavily traveled road as it is. There's people traveling between communities and there's farms along there. So I think it's something that would be absorbed by the road and, and the traffic that exists on it.
Thanks, Jim. Gene, did you have a question?
Oh, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Gene. Any other questions from council? Is there anyone joining us tonight for this hearing to, that would like to ask a question? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Bickle. And from the sounds, but council would like an invitation to the grand opening.
Will do.
Thank you. We'll move on now to severance consent application B11-2021 and B12-2021 zoning amendment application C05-2021 Shirley and John Little at 354 6 line west concession six, part of lot four, former township of Percy. Liz?
You, Mr. Mayor, we have missed over severance consent B10, but I can go forward with that one and then go back to B10.
I'm sorry, I threw to the bottom of the page. I missed it. So go ahead with this one and then we'll go back.
Oh, shit.
Hopefully we can mute. This is for severance consent applications B11 and 2020 and zoning. Somebody isn't muted. My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
And zoning amendments application C05-2020. The applicants are Shirley and John Little. The property is located at 354 6 line west in the former township of Seymour. Severance application B11 proposes to create one new parcel being approximately five acres with an existing residential dwelling and outbuildings from approximately 100 acres. Severance B12 proposes to create one new parcel. It's approximately 47.5 acres of vacant land and will be eligible for residential building purposes. The retained portion is approximately 47.5 acres. It does contain the existing outbuildings, but will also, also be eligible for residential building permits. The applicants did file the zoning amendment application in conjunction with the severance applications to ensure the correct zoning is in place. The current zoning of the subject lands is rural and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for severance B11 will be rural residential. The zoning for severance, proposed zoning for severance B12, it would remain rural EP and ES. And the zoning for the retained portion with the existing outbuildings would also remain rural EP and ES. And to note, all the environmental protection and environmentally sensitive zoning would remain in place. We did circulate the applications to Neil Allenson as well as Lower Trent Conservation Authority in which their comments were included in the agenda package. And the mapping just so shows the proposed lot lines as per the applicants. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone from council, Mr. Little, I'm sure I saw you here.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps as a small background, the land on concession six has been in my family for two generations. My brother and I are third on the land at the end of the road, which Kevin Little and I have owned for 20 years now. We would like to keep my parents 100 acre land in the family, but we're of a family of six. And my brother and I would like to keep it, but we also realize that we need to pass it on one day as well. And so that's why we've asked to divide it into three parcels, two sections of land and then the house separate.
Thanks. Thanks very much, John. Is there any councilors who wish to ask a question?
Yeah, just, just Jim, could you address the, the comments from the Lord Trent about B12?
Certainly through you, your worship. The Conservation Authority reviews applications like this through broad based mapping. And so I think what is happening in this case is that the, the hill, which is wood, it is triggering them to identify it as something that needs to be looked at more. I'm, I'm sure most of it is not a wetland. And if they did a site visit, that they would determine that. There may be some wetlands. I'm not sure. But from the municipal perspective, I think the majority of the lands is outside of that area, outside the buffers that would be required to protect anything. And, and certainly there's ample space to continue the farming operation or to place a house on the property appropriately. So I think we'll be talking to Mr. Little more about that and how to approach that. But I think that there's simply flagging that there's something there that might need a closer look. But the closer look I took, I don't think there's too much to be found.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors have any questions? Anyone joining the meeting tonight that has a question on this application? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next application. And Rosemary has a disclosure for this item, so she'll turn off her video. Severance consent application B10-2021 for Fred Thompson, 1257 county road 38, county road 38 concession eight, lot 17, former township of Percy, or sorry, township of Seymour. Liz?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, this is severance consent application B10-2021. The applicant is Fred Thompson. Property is located. The applicant is Fred Thompson. Property is located twelve fifty seven County Road thirty eight in the former township of Seymour. The application proposes a lot line adjustment or a lot addition between two existing properties. Approximately seven point three four acres, it can, they contain the existing agricultural outbuildings, will be severed from the property on County Road thirty eight. This severed portion is going to merge to the adjacent lands, which is addressed as twelve fifty seven County Road thirty eight. That property is currently one point two six acres, and it does contain an existing residential dwelling. The retained portion will stay at approximately ninety one point six six acres of vacant land. As the property is located on a county road, we did circulate to Northumberland County, in which their comments were included in the agenda package. And the mapping shows the proposed configuration. The yellow in the middle is where the existing residential dwelling is located. And the blue parcel is what will be severed off and added to the yellow portion with the existing residential dwelling. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, I am.
How are you, sir?
I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Anything to add, Mr. Thompson?
Perhaps a bit of background. This original severance was is some sixty five years old. It was done by my grandfather and did not take into account some issues that would be current today. Notably, the barn is within two hundred feet of the of the residence. It is part of the farm property, not part of the residence. The driveway access is part of the farm property, as is the hydroline, the telephone, not part of the residence. And and the residence has a right of access. So what I'm proposing is that the, and of course, one other thing is that the septic system is such that the the drain from the tank runs outside the boundaries of the existing lot and down across the the field of the farm. So there's a, there's, I would call it an encumbrance on the farm occasion by the residents. So the adjustment of the lot takes into account all of these issues and corrects them. I'm proposing that the that the driveway becomes part of the residential property, and we will have a right of access to service the farm property. Otherwise, this this request will take care of the rest of the issues. That's what I can add. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any councilors that have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Metcalf.
Thank you. Just a clarification that it'll be a shared access with the existing drive. So there'll be no new entrance for the farming operation put in. Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone present at the meeting that would like to speak to this application? Hearing none, we will move on. We are now at I see Mr. Tully has a conflict on this one, and he'll turn off his video. And we're at severance consent application B thirteen twenty twenty one. Shane and Catherine Vanden Tiller and Terrence Adam, two twenty nine Edgar Road. Concession eleven, part of lot three, former township of Percy. Liz?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, it's severance consent application. The applicant is Shane and Terrence Adam. Properties are located on Edgar Road in the former township of Seymour. The application proposes a lot line adjustment or lot addition between two existing properties. Approximately forty two point eight three acres of vacant land will be severed from Edgar Road. This severed portion will merge to the adjacent lands, which is two twenty nine Edgar Road, which is currently five point nine seven acres with an existing residential dwelling. The retained portion would be approximately thirty two point six nine acres and does contain existing agricultural outbuildings. We did circulate to Neil Allinson, the manager of Roads and Urban Services. As the the yellow portion here does have the existing residential dwelling and an existing driveway, we did want to make sure that the proposed retained parcel would meet the requirements if it was ever developed in the future for residential building purposes. And his comments were included in the agenda package for your review. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are are the Vanden Tellers or Mr. Adam here tonight?
I'm here, Bob.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Any anything to add?
Uh, no, I think Liz covered it for us. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you very much. Counsel, anyone have any questions? Getting off light, Catherine. Is there anyone joining us on this meeting would like to ask any questions? Thank you very much. Thanks, Catherine.
Thanks, everybody.
We are now at consent severance consent application B fourteen twenty twenty one. Zoning Amendment Application C zero six twenty twenty one. Darcy and Miranda Carla, five one one seven County Road twenty five, concession five, part of lots fourteen and fifteen, part one of Plan thirty eight R five seven five eight, former township of Percy. Liz?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. This is a severance consent application B fourteen twenty twenty one. Zoning Amendment Application C oh six twenty twenty one should be. For Darcy and Miranda Carlon, the property is located at fifty one seventeen County Road twenty five in the former township of Percy. The severance application proposes to create one new parcel being approximately two point five acres and does contain the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings. It's coming off approximately eighty five point four one acres. The retained portion is approximately eighty two point nine one acres. It contains an existing outbuilding and will be eligible for residential building permits. The applicants did file the zoning amendment application in conjunction with the severance application to ensure the correct zoning is in place. The current zoning is rural environmental protection and environmentally sensitive. The proposed bone, proposed zoning for the severance application portion, it's going to be rural residential. The zoning for the retained portion, which is approximately eighty two point nine one acres, will remain rural EP and ES. And it would be noted that all environmental protection and environmentally sensitive zoning will remain in place. We did circulate the application to Northumberland County and Lower Trent Conservation Authority, in which their comments were included in the agenda package for your review. And the mapping just shows where the existing residential dwelling is located, which is the proposed severed portion, as well as the retained portion along the county road. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Does your Miranda with us tonight?
Yep, I'm here.
Anything to add, Darcy?
No, I think that's it. Just hopefully everything can go through.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Not hearing anyone. I will ask if there's anyone joining us tonight that would like to have any questions answered on this application. Again, solid. So thank you very much, Darcy.
Yep, thank you very much.
We'll carry on. We're at severance consent application B fifteen twenty twenty one and B sixteen twenty twenty one. And severance consent applications B seventeen twenty twenty one and B eighteen twenty twenty one. Zoning Amendment Application for John and Cynthia Crowley, concession road thirteen east, concession twelve, parts of lot sixteen and seventeen, former township of Percy. Liz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. These ones might take a little longer to explain. There are, it's severance consent B fifteen and B sixteen for one side of the road and B seventeen and eighteen for the other side of the road. They are two separate parcels. And the application is for John and Cynthia Crowley. Severance application B fifteen, it proposes to create one new parcel approximately seventeen of vacant land from approximately sixty two acres and will be for residential building purposes. Severance B sixteen proposes to create one new parcel approximately twelve point zero eight acres of vacant land and will also be eligible for residential building permits. The retained portion is approximately thirty two point two three acres, is also vacant land and would be eligible for residential building permits. As noted, they did apply for the zoning amendment in conjunction with the severance applications to ensure the correct zoning is in place. For these two applications, the proposed zoning for severance B fifteen, the due to the lot size, the zoning would remain rural. The zoning for severance B sixteen would be a rural exception in which the exception to the rural zoning would acknowledge the reduced lot size. The zoning for the retained portion, it's approximately thirty two point two three acres, would remain rural EP and ES. And to note that all the EP and ES zoning would remain in place. And we did circulate to Neil Allinson, the manager of Roads and Urban Services, as well as Lower Trent Conservation Authority. And we did receive an email from an adjacent landowner being Isabel Wickman. These comments were included in the agenda package for your review. And the mapping shows the proposed layout. And again, these are the properties on the north side of the road, as well as as the zoning. And then if we switch to the south side of the road, same applicants. B seventeen proposes to create one new parcel. It's approximately five point two three acres of vacant land from approximately two hundred and eight acres and will be for residential building purposes. Severance B eighteen proposes to create one new parcel. It's approximately seven point nine five acres of vacant land will be for residential building purposes. The retained portion will remain at approximately hundred and ninety four point eight two acres and would be eligible for residential building permits. And the same zoning amendment application applies to these properties. And the proposed zoning for severance B seventeen would be rural residential. The proposed zone for severance B eighteen will be rural residential and environmentally sensitive. And the zoning for the retained portion, which remains at approximately hundred ninety four acres, would we would remain rural EP and ES. And to note that all the EP and ES zoning would remain in place. And again, the same comments were received for the applications on the south side of the road. And then the mapping details, the proposed configuration should be noted that we did go back and forth with the applicants a few times to try to reconfigure the lots to keep them away from any of the wetlands, which, for the most part, we may have to reconfigure one of the lot lot lines slightly based on the comments received from Lower Trent Conservation Authority. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Liz. I saw John's name there. John, do you have anything to add?
Can you hear me, Bob?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, good, because we're just driving here. But no, nothing to add. And we can, eh, line adjustments, whatever, we can work with this. Jim, there on that, that's not a problem.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council?
I have a question, Bob.
Go ahead. The Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's similar to the question that Counselor Redden brought up in a prior application with the lower Trent's comments on on both spots of the areas of influence. It appears to me that that all four of these locations have quite a large pocket that would not not be part of that area of influence, yet the comments don't kind of relate from the lower Trent. Is there any, would you agree that there seems to be an envelope for for development on those properties?
Through you, Your Worship. Yes, we've looked at these in detail, and as Liz mentioned, we spoke with the applicants about making sure, especially on the south side, that we were out of the 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 wetland south of those lots on the south side of the road is a provincially significant wetland. So we certainly wanted to be outside the one hundred and twenty meter buffer. On the north side, I think there's a small drainage course to the west of B fifteen, if I'm getting it correct. And that lot is either it, the western edge of it might just be within that one hundred and twenty meter influence area. We don't have access to the the mapping that shows those one hundred and twenty meter buffers because lower Trent staff are working out of the office at this point. So it will be helpful when we get that mapping to be able to adjust anything we need to. But I would say the majority of all these lots is outside the one hundred and twenty meter area of influence.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else have a question?
Can I, Mr. Mayor, can I just add that we did have email comments and concerns from some of the neighboring property owners? So we've shared that information that I just advanced to council. And we'll certainly, if they weren't able to get on here tonight, we'll certainly make sure they have the chance in the seven day period after the meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Jean.
Listening to Liz's comments, I just want to clarify that this proposal, as it's laid out now, is for six lots, not four, as we've been advertised. Am I correct in that assumption?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Because it is two separate, two separate properties, there are two new parcels being proposed for the north side, plus the retained parcel. And then two new properties being proposed for the south side, plus the retained parcel. But because they are two separate properties and two separate roll numbers, it is in conformance with the municipal official plan.
I realize that. I realize that it's not the issue of six lots, but there are three lots on each side of the road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Is anyone that's joined the meeting tonight have any questions they'd like to ask about this? Okay, and and Jim, you'll you'll be in contact with the folks that gave written comments so that they can have a chance. That's great. Thank you very much. We're now at severance consent application B nineteen twenty twenty one. And zoning amendment application C zero eight twenty twenty one. Corinne Patterson, Jessica Root and Jason Butler, three forty concession two west, concession two, part of lots ten and eleven, part one, Plan thirty eight R one five three zero, former township of Percy. Liz?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. This is severance consent application B nineteen twenty twenty one. And zoning amendment application C oh eight twenty twenty one. The applicants are Corinne Patterson, Jessica Root, and Jason Butler for property located at three forty concession road two west in the former township of Percy. The severance application proposes to create one new parcel being approximately four point two nine acres of vacant land from approximately seventy three point two nine acres and will be for residential building purposes. The retained portion is approximately sixty nine acres and contains the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings. The applicants did file the zoning amendment application in conjunction with the severance application to ensure the correct zoning is in place. The proposed zoning for the severed portion will be rural residential. And the zoning for the retained portion with the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings due to the lot size will remain rural EP and ES. And to note, all the EP and ES zoning will remain in place. We did circulate to Neil Allinson, the manager of Roads and Urban Services, to ensure the property would be eligible for a proper residential entrance. We did circulate to Neil Allenson, the manager of Roads and Urban Services to ensure the property would be eligible for a proper residential entrance. As well as Lower Trent Conservation Authority, in which their comments were included in the agenda package for your review. And then the mapping shows where the proposed lot will be at the corner of the property. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Liz. Are any of the proponents here tonight?
I'm here.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything to add?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's great. Council, any questions on this application?
I had one Bob.
Go ahead Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quick question Liz. I don't think I saw Neil's comments on here. I'm assuming there's no problem with an entrance on the second section.
It was, I thought they were in the agenda, but through you, Mr. Mayor, there was a very site specific. Location for an entrance and Mr. Allenson wanted to ensure Lower Trent Conservation provided a permit or their approval prior to the installation of an entrance.
So there's no concern there, right?
No, there was no concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Is there anyone joining the meeting?
Question there.
Oh, thanks. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. Again, with just to clarify Lord Trent on that mapping, where where would the? Area of influence be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a small water course and I think it ends with a pond just to the west of the proposed lot. And so I'd say approximately thirty to forty percent of the lot on the western portion would be within that area of influence.
So on the retained.
Yeah, the water course comes down. I. I don't know whether Liz can bring the map up again, but it comes down through the center of the retained parcel. There's a pond to the west of the lot. And. Yeah, there you go. So if you measure the one hundred and twenty meter area of influence from. Not the pond necessarily, but from the water course, which we can see on our air photos. Then it it does affect the western end of the proposed lot.
Okay, thank you.
But again, at least fifty percent, if not more, is outside the area of influence.
Any other questions from council? Is there anyone joining the meeting tonight that has any questions about this application? Thank you very much. We'll continue. Thank you. We're we are now at section J, which is a road allowance closure and sale. Sunny Residence Inc., east end of Arton Street to Union Street, not traveled. Between lots eighteen, nineteen and twenty on the north side and lots forty-one, forty-two and forty-three on the south side. Plan one twelve, former town of Campbellford. Liz.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, it's a proposed purchase of an unopened road allowance. And the applicant is Sunny Residence Inc. It's a portion of the unopened road allowance in Plan one twelve. In the former town of Campbellford, it's identified once I switch to the next page, which is the mapping. Sorry, the applicant actually owns both sides of the subject road allowance, which is part of the draft plan approved subdivision SB oh two. Two thousand and seventeen. So as the applicant currently owns both side of the road allowance, there was no requirements to circulate to any other adjacent landowners. And the draft survey does show the subject road allowance that is potentially going to be closed and offered for sale. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anyone with us from? The sunny. Corporation? The nun is constantly.
Mr. Mayor, everybody, yes, I'm the from the rest of the Inc.
Thank you very much for joining us. Does council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My my question is, so this road allowance is not going to be absorbed into the subdivision, but actually we're going to create one new lot, which then would become for sale? If I understood it correctly.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, to you. So yes, it'll become part of the developed lands of the the subdivision, which would be a townhouse development.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is there anyone joining the meeting which would like to ask a question about this application? Thank you very much. I appreciate your joining us.
Thank you.
We will move on. This is a plan of subdivision SB zero two twenty twenty. Zoning amendment application C fourteen dash twenty twenty. Two zero zero three six zero three Ontario Corporation McDonald Homes Homewood Avenue. Part lot thirteen concession twelve lot twenty-seven and lot twenty-eight. Plan one thirteen, former village of Hastings. Liz.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, it is plan of subdivision SB oh two twenty twenty. As well as zoning amendment application C fourteen twenty twenty. The applicants are McDonald Homes for property on Homewood Avenue in the village of Hastings. This is the second public meeting to further consider the proposed plan of subdivision. And to consider the zoning regulations that will apply to the proposed lots within the subdivision. The purpose of the application is to create twenty-six dwelling units. It's they will be consisting of ten lots for single detached residential dwellings. Four semi-detached dwellings and twelve house twelve townhouse units contained with three blocks. The site will also contain a stormwater management facility and a walkway. No new roads are required as the land can be accessed through Homewood Avenue. And existing services would be extended to the proposed subdivision. We did include some detail on the notice as well as on the municipal website. That further work and further information that has been done since we had the first public meeting on September twenty ninth. The subdivision is supported by the provincial policy statement. The growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, the Northumberland County official plan, as well as the Trent Hills official plan. With respect to the increased density development and the mix of housing types. The proposed development conforms to the requirements of the resident residential two zone as per the Trent Hill zoning by law. It meets the required setbacks, area coverage, height, parking and unit size requirements for housing within the R two zone. As shown on the site plan that was submitted with the application. The applicants did complete an environmental impact study in support of the proposed development. The study was submitted to Lower Trent Conservation as well as to the municipality of Trent Hills for review. Comments contained in the correspondence from Lower Trent Conservation dated December fourth were provided at the first public meeting. And there were no concerns identified regarding natural hazards and natural heritage. Additional comments were provided by Lower Trent Conservation regarding the stormwater management plan. These comments were also made available at the first public meeting. No significant concerns were identified. Additional details and clarifications were identified. To be provided as part of the completion of the source water management plan, which is a requirement as a condition of subdivision approval. Lower Trent Conservation did express concerns regarding the completion of the stormwater facilities within a source water protection area. A response to these concerns has been provided by the project engineer and is available on the municipality of Trent Hills website. As well, the municipal bylaw regarding transport pathways in a source water protection area requires design of urban infrastructure in these areas. To take the situation into account. And updated traffic analysis has been completed for the proposed development based on two thousand and nineteen traffic counts provided by the municipality. Based on the projected calculations to two thousand and thirty-four, the volume for Homewood Avenue would be considered in the category of a low volume road. The traffic memo is provided on the Trent Hills website as well. And conditions of draft approval will require the creation of an appropriate construction staging plan. In the detailed design for the infrastructure installation. The service design plan will also require that post-development design of the road surface be incorporated into that plan. So basically, this is this is the proposed plan that was circulated for the first notice as well as for the second notice for the public meeting. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Liz. Is there anyone here from McDonald Homes? I see David McDonald, I think. Yes, I do. Okay, are there any questions from council?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, oh, good. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where's your last comment about the road on there? I just wondered what did what does that mean?
Yeah.
Let me tackle that one, Mr. Mayor, since I wrote it. I think at the first public meeting, councillor English, there were concerns about, you know, as the services are installed, what will that do to the road? There's questions about the road from the. From the existing property owners. So we wanted to make sure that as part of the detailed design for the installation of the services for the new lots. That we take a look at the road. It might be something. You know, I think the manager of roads was planning on looking at resurfacing that road. Either this year or next year. So we'll all be incorporated together so that basically we hope to have a better road when this is all done.
Thank you. Is that not just a service treated road as it is, Jim?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just note that Mr. McDonald has a number of his team with him, engineers and planners. So if there are questions from council, now's the time.
Okay, council, anyone else have any questions? Okay, is there anyone here joining us tonight on the meeting that would like to ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I I do.
And your name, sir, and address?
Is Alexander Maxwell, two thirty-seven Homewood Avenue, Hastings.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Alex Maxwell. My wife and I recently bought a beautiful house in the village of Hastings at the end of November twenty twenty. We researched the area and found out that this street of Homewood was one of the most desirable streets to live on in the village of Hastings. Trent Hills mission statement states, come for a visit, stay for a lifestyle. We truly believe this. And bought this waterfront home on Homewood Avenue with our life savings for the purpose of retiring. In this application subdivision of twenty-six dwelling units. That contain four semi-detached homes and twelve townhouses is directly across from existing homes. On Homewood. Some of the existing homes. Mr. Mayor, are valued at over a million dollars presently. These townhomes and semis will have a huge negative impact on existing homeowners and taxpayers for many years to come. Why is this development going to build? These semis and townhouses directly across the street from homes that are valued at a million dollars. Please explain this and the impact this will have on the environment, etc. I will bring attention to two building developments presently in Trent Hills that do not have. These home dwelling disparities presently in their development. One is Batavia Homes in Hastings. There are no semis and townhouses built. In this development of attack detached homes. The other development is Haven on the Trent in Campbellford. There are no semis and townhouses being built directly across from million dollar homes. They are on the Trent River in Campbellford. The Haven on the Trent. For everyone's information is is run by McDonald Homes. It's the same builder applying for this application. Existing homeowners on Homewood should be protected by the municipality of Trent Hills and city councillors. The home dwelling disparities in this proposed development are very much one-sided in favor of the home builder McDonald Homes. They can build what size and style of home they want and how many homes they can fit onto this parcel of land. This development has no consideration for the immediate impact of existing homeowners. And the change that this development will cut will bring to this much desirable street of Homewood Avenue for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I just clarify a couple of points before others try to address that? Just want to note that Batavia subdivision, yes, it was all single dwellings, but it started, I believe, in two thousand and six before. Many of the requirements of the growth plan were in place across the province and now in Northumberland County and Trent Hills. Which require us to increase the densities for development. I'd also note that Haven on the Trent, although Mr. McDonald is building homes there, is a development by Sifton Developments who created the lots. And although they are single dwellings, there have been proposals which so far have proved unfeasible for creating. Much higher density even along the water on that development. So. So things can sometimes appear to be one way, but there's other factors involved. I'm not sure if Mr. McDonald's team wants to address any of those points or not.
Yeah, I I am certainly. Happy to speak to those those points. We we work in several different locations. We offer a variety of different. Home styles as as the market dictates and the provincial. Planning statement also dictates. Somehow some subdivisions may be more heavily weighted towards single family. But we we certainly, we we provide a mixture of homes and that's what the market typically is looking for. Can I can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
There are million dollar homes across the street. They're going to be semis and townhouses. They're going to affect. The value of my home and homes on this street. This is a very. Desirable street to live on, Lord Mayor, as you know. And. There is no consideration for the homeowner. That is the the existing homeowner. You know, I just bought this place. I was not told about this development until after I moved in. And these semis are going to be directly across from my house. And these are going to impact the value of my house. Are my taxes going to go down because of this? I don't think so. And you're 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 building more houses over there in a small parcel of land. And this is a very desirable. People walk down this street. All the time and they love the area and now it's going to be destroyed with these semis. Where are they going to park, this Lord Mayor? They're going to park on the street. Like, there's no parking. There's nothing. And the value of our homes. That are a million dollars are going to be affected by homes that are being semis and. And townhouses directly across the street. And yes, McDonald Homes has this. Haven on the Trent, but there's a million dollar home. There is no semis or townhouses directly across the street from them. They they don't exist, but they're coming into this beautiful, beautiful street. In in the village of Hastings and is going to totally destroy it with this this proposed. Development. It's it's unacceptable.
Jim, can someone speak to the parking, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. So the as noted in the. PowerPoint presentation, the all the units meet the requirements of the R two zone. So that is in terms of the required amount of parking spaces. For each type of unit. I believe each unit from townhouses to semis to singles will have garages as well as. Driveways which would hold. I believe each unit from townhouses to semis to singles will have garages as well as driveways, which would hold. Two vehicles, so I would estimate there's three spaces for each, for each unit. Stand to be corrected by Mr. McDonald or his planner on that, but I think that's correct. And so that is the requirement or more than a requirement for the zoning.
And when they have their boat and they have their boats and their, their other vehicles that they have and their friends, where are they going to park, Mr. Peters? They're going to park on the street.
We have, we have a great marine in Hastings where boats can be stored.
Yeah.
Mr. Hutchinson has a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, folks, for the opportunity to say a few words tonight. I, I am the planner for Mr. McDonald and have been involved with this since last summer. A, a few points. First of all, as, as we know, this is a follow up to a September twenty ninth meeting. So clearly, we discussed this early last fall. And we had, I think at that time, maybe eight, ten letters from neighbors on Homewood.
Well, I was not, I was not, I did not buy my home.
One, one at a time, you, you've had your turn and let, please let him answer and then.
So I, I have been a municipal planner of thirty years in various communities before going into the private sector. There does seem to be this propensity where vendors do not volunteer information. Clearly, the owners of this property in September through the fall. Knew exactly what was on the table for along the other side of Homewood Drive. Unfortunately, this gentleman bought without that knowledge. But it was well known and was advertised on your website and whatever. Secondly, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. But if you look at all the policies in the official plans, the principal provincial policy statements. Municipal and provincial. House values is not a criteria or approving or disapproving an application. Actually, in fact, and it was alluded to in the notice and I think the first bullet point by staff. The province, county, the town, towns official plan. All push for density, infield development. Not sprawling onto greenfield sites, not expanding settlement areas. But development within the established settlement area of the municipality. And as noted, this proposal meets provincial. County, town, OP and zoning. I'm sorry, but it does check off all the boxes of what a development is supposed to have. So there's more density. That's what we've been asked to do. We're trying to stop sprawl and put more people. I, I would suggest in the current environment, as, as, as anyone know, house prices are crazy. People want to be out of the GTA and et cetera, et cetera. So I would suggest the twenty six units are not going to be. Cheap. I think they're good neighbors. They'll be good citizens and taxpayers of the municipality, so. I have to believe as a professional planner and, and, and I think my colleagues would say, this meets. All the criterias that are criteria that's asked of any new subdivision in Hastings. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, any, you wish another question?
Well, you know. The investment that I made into this house. And now you have semis across the street there that are going to be. Developed. That brings down the home value of homes that are, that are higher priced. And Haven on the Trent, there is nothing. There is no semis or that. Directly across from these, these homes that that overlook the Trent River. Lord Mayor, like this. Like this, this is a very, very beautiful street. And this is what attracted my wife and I to retire here. And now this, this whole thing is going to be literally destroyed with this development. And you have more houses, these twenty six homes, there's not even. There's eighteen homes on the other side of the street. And you're, 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 you're. Find another parcel of land to do semis and townhouses. Like, there's too many homes that are going in this and there's only one way out of this street. Is down and, and you do a little circle and you come out. The traffic that is going to be on this street, Lord Mayor, is going to be astronomical. People will not be able to walk down this street like they have done and you have done in the past. And lots of people love this street. And they. It, it's going to be destroyed. Absolutely destroyed. And there's too many houses going across, you're, you're cookie cutting. You know, this, this development to get as many homes in here to find it profitable for whoever. And to me, it, it's a tragedy. And.
Mr. Mayor. It's Deputy Mayor Metcalf.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've seen some developments by McDonald's Homes, although I'm, I'm not a large amount. I think it would be useful for myself to see some of the building style examples. I'm sure that, that David and, and his team has. Those sort of things that what they've done and some proposals. Especially exterior materials that are proposed perhaps for these homes in this area. If something like that. Jim and McDonald's Homes could be available. I know it would be useful for myself to. To sort of see what, what the exterior and what the layouts of, of this will be. I know that's something that's. Forthcoming, but some examples perhaps of projects that have been done in the past that are going to be similar to what. The idea for this one would be for myself would be beneficial.
Yes, sir, your worship, we, they have provided that in the past for other developments and I'm sure that there'd be no problem with them providing that in this case.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Yes, sorry, Rose, I, you're, you're, you're not up on the screen. I can't see everybody. Go ahead.
Just to go back a couple of years. Not that long ago, we were struggling with our water and wastewater facilities. We were struggling. And we still do with, with roads, bridges, et cetera. And, and the big push from the province was, as is already, has already been mentioned, was intensification in our urban centers. And we, they, they made us look at how many users do we have on? Our drinking water plant. It costs the same amount. For a small municipality with a small population. To fix, repair, keeping good condition and keep our, our constituents safe as it does the city of Toronto. So if we have to lay a mile of pipe, we pay the same as the city of Toronto does. You know, Toronto, I don't know how many people they have per square mile. Might be ten thousand, might be a hundred thousand. What our base is, is way, way, way lower than that, so. A lot of people were complaining that our, our water and sewer, our taxes, everything was so much higher. In fact, I had a conversation with a politician from Toronto four years ago. Who called me and complained because he had a resident that moved down here. Their taxes were way more than what they were paying for three times the value of a house in Toronto. And when I explained to him what I just said about cost us the same amount. So we have to put it on the taxes. Taxes have to, have to help maintain all those services. He was blown away. He said, I never thought of it that way. This has been a real education. That you have to pay the same price for an engineer, for a piece of pipe, for a mile of pavement as I do in the city of Toronto. And the number of people that I have to, to pay for it. So, so we got to keep that in mind as well with the province pushing us to, to be more efficient. To intensify what we have. I live on a street in Campbellford and there's been some new houses built here in the last twenty years, some of them. Well over a million dollars, not mine, but some of my neighbors. Dead End Street, as you go down the hill, there's a fourplex being built right now. And people are excited about it because there are people in our area that now are looking at. They don't want to live in a house, a big house anymore. They want something smaller that they can maintain and is, and is less taxes, et cetera. There's two neighbors on the street over that have actually put their application in. And I, and I can speak to, to the builder here this evening. The product that, that he is building is first class. It is not junk. It, they don't, they don't cut corners. Anyone who has looked at their homes or bought one of their homes have been. Really, really pleased and, and can say nothing but good about it, but I just go back to the tax base. And how we have to try to, to make sure that we've got enough users that we can keep those facilities going. And the push from the province. So if we don't abide and, and live up to what they're asking us, we don't get help. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Rosemary. Anyone else? Well, thank you, everyone. That, that concludes this evening's meeting. At this time, I'll, I'll call for. Sorry, someone spoke, who?
Mayor Bob.
Yes.
Gene.
Yeah, go ahead, Gene, sorry.
Change the subject a little bit. Can you hear me, Bob?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I would have asked this before, when we were on the subject before, about the road closure on between Arton and Union. Just a question, what is the proposed? Time that somebody go to see some building happen in that subdivision that's been on the books for a long time?
Your worship, they're, they'd love me to get a permit issued for a model home tomorrow. They're anxious to get going.
Thank you.
Okay, gee, so, and anyone else? In which case, I'll call for adjournment. It is recommended that we do now adjourn at. Seven twenty four PM. Got to get a mover and seconder, please.
I'll move.
Move by Ken.
I'll second.
Second by Rose. Would you call a question, please, Doug?
Councillor Tully.
Yes.
Councillor Bratney.
Yes.
Councillor English.
Yes.
Councillor Kelleher McLennan.
Yes.
Captain, Deputy Mayor Metcalf.
Yes.
Councillor Redden.
Yes.
Mayor Crete.
Yes.
We are adjourned, your worship. If you can give me a moment, I will. Stop the recording and stop the live stream.